Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, and with justice for all.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. So the first order of business on the agenda this evening is the election of officers and subcommittee appointments. So we will begin with our election of our school committee chair or appointment of school committee chair. So do I have any nominations for the position of chairperson of the Ne'er Ganset School Committee?
I'll nominate Tammy McNeese.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes. Five zero.
Thank you, Pete. And I want to just say thank you first for a couple reasons. I want to say thank you, obviously, to all of the voters who elected the five of us. I really am super optimistic. This is going to be a fantastic term. Really excited about, you know, the energy and the commitment and the positivity of the group in front of us, and I'm really excited about that. And I also want to thank the full committee. I'm really humbled and honored, and I appreciate your support in nomination as chair. So thank you very much. That means a lot to me, and I appreciate your support to continue this work. So thank you. Okay, so the next motion is we are looking for a motion to nominate someone for vice chair. Are there any motions? I'd like to nominate, I'd make a motion to nominate Justin Scanion for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Are there any other motions for vice chair before we move to a vote? Right, so we have one motion on the floor to nominate Justin Scanion as vice chair. All those in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Five zero. Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, everyone. I wanted to echo Tammy's sentiments. I think this would be a really productive and good year for all of us.
All right, thank you. So our next nomination will be for clerk. Is there a motion to nominate someone as clerk?
I'd like to nominate Diane.
I'd like to second that. Are there any nominations for clerk, any other nominations for clerk? All those in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? Sorry, I go a little fast. So we, so nominations, we've got a first, we remove the motion and a second for Diane. All those in favor for Diane as clerk? Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Five zero. So congratulations, Diane. We didn't even ask you. We're kind of telling you we really want you to continue. You do a great job. So I'm assuming you're comfortable with that, and we appreciate.
Yeah, I hope you've done a good job, so we'd love to have you continue.
Okay. So the next part of the meeting is the subcommittee assignments. I'm hoping that the committee members have had a chance to look over the different ones. We've got two, four, six, seven, eight, you know, about 10 or 12. And if you, we can never have three because that would be a quorum. So it's one or two. A lot of the committees will have two, but some of them are designated, you know, for example, like the recreation advisory board, we only have one seat, so we can only have one member. Some of the other, like a health and wellness committee, it has a composition for that committee. And so we try to kind of stick with the parameters of if we're looking for two members, great. Sometimes it's one member, but we can never have three. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to go sequential. And then if there is a certain committee where three people are very interested, we can kind of push it to the end of the list. We'll kind of, we'll put a pin in it because we do like to make sure that people are able to select subcommittees that they're interested in. And, you know, so if there's any subcommittees where there's no one or not enough, we'll kind of put it to the end. And if we have any that we have three, we can't do that. We'll kind of rearrange that. So usually, we're able to kind of balance it out. And then for some reason, if we really can't decide from three to two, we can even push it to the next meeting if we have to, but we'll, we'll kind of go sequential. I will try to give a very succinct soundbite. I'll kind of lean on Pete if I leave something important out because we do have two new members. So I want to make sure before we say, sure, I'll do that, that you kind of understand the dates and the time commitment is spelled out, but what the work is. And then also anyone who has served on the committees, if I leave something out and you want to chime in before we get the members, that would be helpful, too. So the buildings and ground committee, in the past, Justin and I have served on that committee together. It kind of goes hand in hand with the capital reserve committee. So the buildings and ground committee really is looking at the long-term capital plan to kind of maintain and protect our assets, which is our school facilities. The first meeting usually happens pretty early on in budget season, which is January. And I believe there's already a meeting even scheduled, you know, already in January. And then depending on the projects, we may meet more frequently. So for example, when we had the very large renovation to the auditorium, Dr. Cummings may pull together that building committee more frequently. When we were resurfacing the gym floor many, many years ago, that committee had to meet to talk about, should we do wood? Should we do another surface? Obviously, when the athletic complex project was going on, that building committee met many times. It has special building committees. So depending on the level of the capital projects, it may meet more frequently, but for sure, you're going to meet one time in January. I will say with the capital reserve committee, that committee traditionally only meets once. And we have two representatives on that committee. There's two members of the town council on that committee. And then each side, the school committee and the town council can nominate one resident. And then the superintendent, the town manager, and the two finance directors are on that committee. So often, the capital reserve is the opportunity for the two school committee members from the building committee to be there, to be present, to elaborate. If the town council's like, well, I don't understand why you need a new auditorium renovated, you know, then you can kind of explain that. All right, so we're looking for two people that really would serve on the buildings and ground and serve on the capital reserve. Really kind of neat work. The time commitment's pretty minimal, depending on the amount of projects. So do we have any members who are interested in that committee? Let's start with the buildings and ground committee.
I do have some interest in that.
Anybody else interested?
I would like to continue with that. I've enjoyed it in the past, so.
Okay. I am also interested, but I'm happy to let Dave and Justin be on that committee. I don't have any problem with that. I know Dave has a whole different set of like strengths and experiences, and I think you would do a great job on that, and Justin's done a great job. So is everybody comfortable if Dave and Justin are the representatives of the building committee?
Yes.
Okay. So I would ask Dave and Justin if you would also be willing to serve on that capital reserve committee that meets really once a year during budget season?
Yeah, as you mentioned before, they're pretty tied together because the biggest experience is we're usually going to have a facility related, as you mentioned. So I would not want to continue doing both.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that? Okay, so the health and wellness committee, Alex Menzies was our representative before. And Pete, is it really that we really need to have one member because it's kind of a balance with teachers and residents and stuff? So you're really only looking for one school committee member?
Indeed. If there's strong interest from two, we could probably make it work, right? But typically, it has been one member. And, you know, we do have on here meets every other month on Tuesdays. That's really, to some degree, up to the committee member who is chairing and the rest of the committee. That has been the pattern, but it doesn't necessarily need to remain that pattern.
In the past, it's been virtual?
It has been virtual, and that has worked for the membership of that committee because we do have parents and people coming from many different settings.
Pete, can you talk a little bit about like the main goals of that committee and then the subcommittees that have kind of branched off of that?
Sure. So the, the purpose of the committee is to act as an advisory board to the school committee on matters pertaining to student and faculty and support staff health and wellness. So for example, that committee takes a strong interest in school lunch and nutrition and really works with our school lunch vendor to ensure that we continue to provide high-quality meals. It also takes a look at things like physical activity, and are we providing enough opportunities for physical activity for students? Couple of years ago, that committee really took the lead in thinking about school start times, and we made some adjustments to school start times. So really, things that are generally aligned to our, we have a school wellness policy and things that are aligned to that school wellness policy.
Any other questions for Pete before we kind of take nominations for that? All right. Who is interested in like to do health and wellness?
I would enjoy doing that.
Okay. I think you'd do a great job, too, CJ, with all of your experience in the school. Is there a second person who is super interested in case we can have two seats?
I mean, I'd be interested in backing you up if necessary, but I think you'd be a great fit. So.
Okay. All right. So CJ, I think you'd be a great fit, and we'll sign you up. And obviously, Lauren or Pete will let the committee members know, like when the first buildings and ground committee is. They'll let you know when the next wellness committee is. Do you know offhand if they have scheduled the next health and wellness yet, or TBD?
Buildings and Ground Committee as well as the Capital Reserve, I'm not sure if they're scheduled.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. All right, the Knights of the Rockingham Arch. I can give a soundbite, but Pete, if you're able to, because I know they have a very specific purpose, and it's supposed to meet at least once a year, but I think, I don't know if they even met last year, or if we didn't get invited, or I'm not sure what happened. But can you explain what the purpose of the committee is?
Sure. So that's a townwide honor that selects a citizen for their contributions to the town of Ne'er Ganset. We do have a representative on that committee. You know, it is a town committee, and so there's people from the schools, but there's people from the town side as well, from community agencies. And so I believe they have restarted their meetings. It was a little bit infrequent during the COVID years, but I think they're getting back up to speed and getting that going. And so, you know, certainly, whoever is nominated, we forward that to the, to the town side, and they include us in their meetings when they have them.
That's what I thought. So I whispered to CJ, I'm like, I'm pretty sure that I remembered that CJ Tudino actually received that honor not that long ago. So congratulations to that, because I remember you being recognized at our school committee meeting. And then I believe one year Frank White may have won as well, but I definitely remember that. So that's pretty exciting. So I hope that they meet this year, and I know like they were meeting, you know, very specifically every year. A lot of things got paused and put on hold during COVID, so I hope that they meet again. So I'm pretty sure we're only going to have one seat on that. So is there anyone that would like to serve on that committee?
I'd like to. I've always been intrigued by it, and it reminds me of a throwback to the Knights of the Round Table, so I'd like to see if it's really like that.
Is everybody okay if Diane does that?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. Okay, so the parliamentarian really is, we're looking for someone that has a background and a good understanding of our Roberts Rules of Order. The parliamentarian is a good person to help the chair or the vice chair, whoever's chairing the meeting, if we're not really sure. Wait a minute, we moved that motion, we edited it, do we take the motion away? Do we make a revision? Traditionally, it has been Diane because I believe out of everybody here, after, have you been 18? after, have you been 18 years on the school committee? 18 years on the school committee in attending all of the Rhode Island School Committee Association meetings, that you have a really good, not only knowledge base, but a really good understanding and practical understanding. I would like to nominate Diane to continue as parliamentarian.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
Okay. Is everybody, is everyone happy with that?
I would second that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Diane.
I'm going to leave home without Robert's Rules of Order.
So the next one is the Rhode Island Association of School Committee. It's kind of a liaison. And so as a school committee member, you'll get on their mailing list. You've already been invited to School Committee 101. They'll have different professional development, different trainings that we're all invited to. And so our RIASK kind of liaison, we're looking for someone who will attend, you know, some of those PD sessions and trainings, and then kind of report pack. In the past, it has been Diane, because she's been really actively involved in that organization. But just because we nominate a liaison or two, it doesn't mean that, okay, now I can't go to that training. Like we, all five of us can go, because we're going to a training. We're not going to talk about something. So I will ask Diane first. Would you be interested in continuing as the RIASK?
Yeah, I'll be happy to continue.
Okay. And then Diane, if we're looking for a second person, what would you kind of say, like you've been this liaison before? What would you say kind of the vision is if someone else also wants to be a liaison? What would you kind of, I don't know if I captured that well enough?
Well, basically, it's our Rhode Island Association of School Committee members. And so they keep us up to date on changes and regulations and laws and a variety of different topics related to serving on the school committee. And it's open, as Tammy said, to all school committee members. And it's very worthwhile. I always learn a lot. So if anybody would like to join me, that'd be fine. But it's open to everybody anyways.
Yeah. Is there anyone that'd be interested in kind of being listed as our second liaison for RIASK?
I'm happy to do it unless somebody else wants to.
No, I think that'd be, I think that'd be great. And then, you know, as we said, anybody can go to any training. But it may be that if there's the annual like Healthy Schools Breakfast, and Diane can't go, and you're able to go, then we'd want you to give the report. But obviously, anyone that goes to any of those professional developments can come and give that. So thank you to Diane and CJ for being our liaisons for that. So the next one is our Special Education Advisory Committee. Dr. Denton, if you'd be willing to come give a soundbite and a sales pitch about, it would be really great to, we are allowed to have two school committee members on that subcommittee. If you can give a high-level overview of the goal, what you're hoping the frequency will be, you know, between now and the end of the school year. And if you have an idea of the next meeting date, we'd love for your sales pitch here.
Okay, there, now it's on. Thank you. Yes, we're very excited that our new Special Education, Narragansett Special Education Action Committee, that's how they rename themselves, is up and running. We have our chairperson co-team, and we have a secretary. They have their membership. And they're working right now on their bylaws and their brochure. And the purpose of it is to have a group of community members, faculty, and parents who are really focused on making sure that the school district is giving full access to all students and special education to our entire educational system. And to really be there as a support and an advocate for our families and for our staff. So it's an exciting group. They're going to get together a minimum of four times a year, but they might also plan some special activities. And there's a lot of positive energy right now, because they're newly formed. And their next meeting is in January.
Are they going to be generally meeting in person or virtual? And it would be like early afternoon for, or evening, or TBD?
So they're meeting at an evening time. I think six o'clock has been their go-to time. And they do, they have been meeting in person, because they also are a small committee of only eight people. They may at times give opportunities for people to join virtually. But just because they're new, we've really encouraged them to try to meet in person so that they can bond as a team.
Thank you for the update. We appreciate that.
Thank you for inviting me.
Yes, on the spot. Thanks. And we can have up to two school committee members on that committee. Is there anyone that's interested in the Special Education Action Committee?
I'm definitely interested in that.
Thank you. Is there a second school committee member who's interested? I would be happy to be a second member. You know, most certainly, just interested. I'd like to do that. All right, well, very good. Are you guys all okay if CJ and I are the representatives for this committee?
That's great.
All right, great. Okay, so we're on to the District Technology Committee. I know previously, Justin was on that committee. Dr. Cummings, can you give us a soundbite of that? And then certainly, Justin can chime in, too. But can you kind of give us a high-level soundbite?
Sure. And, you know, I would ask, if we needed, Julio can certainly answer any specific questions that we have. But this committee works with Julio and is really our advisory board to develop our technology plans, both short-term and long-term. So they advise on any policy issues that we may put forward regarding technology. They advise on the technology budget. They advise on kind of the directions that we're going. So most recently, for example, they have had a really robust discussion about the use of AI and kind of where we're going with that as a district. So they've been really an invaluable resource for us as we think about how technology integrates with the educational process.
Justin, did you want to add on anything to?
Oh, yeah. I think, Peter, you did a good job explaining the basics. It really is a program for programs. We go through, you know, try to figure out what's best systems for students, for schools. We have a one-to-one laptop program, so we're always, you know, making decisions on what to buy, how to lease, how to, not at least, how to like ensure laptops like that, what's the best decision going forward. Also, updating equipment, such as Wi-Fi routers and hot points and all that stuff. So this committee is really trying to focus on a long-term basis of trying to, you know, keep our technology up to date.
Great, thank you. And we can have two members on that committee. Who is interested in that committee?
I would love to be, continue to be on it. It's really been a joy the last eight years there.
Okay, thank you.
I have some interest in there, too.
I wonder why, Dave? Isn't that kind of your whole career and background and stuff like that? Great. That is wonderful. Is everybody comfortable with Justin and Dave being the school committee members?
For the record, I don't represent any vendor that we work with.
Great. All right, so.
That we'll ever work with.
Okay. Well, thank you to Justin and Dave for that. So the Policy Review Subcommittee is two school committee members that will meet with Pete. And that is if there are outdated school committee policies that need to be revised, the school committee members will work with Pete to kind of go through revisions and semantics and looking at policies from other districts. Or if there's a brand-new policy that we have to write, you know, we'll look at the ride policy, we'll look at other district policies. And then the Policy Subcommittee will bring those policies to the full school committee. If it's a new policy, it'll go through a series of a first read, a second read, and a vote stretched out over three meetings. If it's a revision, we would do one revision. But all of the voting comes to the full committee. The Policy Subcommittee does the work behind the scenes to get those policies ready in draft form to bring to the full school committee. All right, so who is interested? Diane. And Diane has done a wonderful job, not only with a lot of the hard work, with looking at, in great detail, you know, ride policy or other policies, but also really good ideas about consistency and aligning and semantics and grammar and detail and stuff. I'm also very interested in the Policy Subcommittee. I've been doing that with Diane for a while, and I would actually be very interested in continuing that with Diane.
I support that. Likewise.
Great. You guys okay if, so if it's Diane and I for Policy Subcommittee?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
I can always back you up if you have to.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. So the Town Council Liaison, we, we've never had like a formal meeting where like the Town Council School Committee Liaison meets with the School Committee Town Council Liaison. I think that, you know, in the spirit of open communication, where it's, it's Dr. Cummings talks with the town manager a lot, our finance director talks with the town finance director, you know, it's appropriate. And we encourage the town council members to reach out to Dr. Cummings or reach out to any of us. I think we were off to a great start this week when we had our, our School Committee Town Council meeting. So I'm happy to be the Town Council, the School Committee Town Council Liaison. It's not really a thing where the two chairs or the representative are really going to kind of meet and decide anything. But I think in the spirit of openness, I'm glad that we're listing it and trying to just make sure that we kind of formalize that partnership. So I'm happy to serve in that capacity, if that makes sense to everybody. Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, so the next one is Negotiation Subcommittee. All the committees, you know, are equally important, but high priority with this Subcommittee. Pete, can you give a soundbite about the work that these two members will do? And we really do need to have two members would be ideal. And then the time commitment, perhaps, and the, the timing?
Sure. So this, the negotiations, so every three years, we have a contract negotiation with our two, we have two unions. One is our Support Staff Union, which consists of our support staff, teacher assistants, secretaries, bus drivers, custodians. And our other major union is our Teachers Union. And so this committee, I mean, the members on this committee are part, along with me, with Karen, with a couple of our administrators, to go into negotiations, to renegotiate the contracts every three years. So the, each union also has their own committee. We meet often for hours at a time, you know, over a period of weeks or months, and come to an agreement on how the contract will be kind of moving forward, typically having to do with working conditions, salaries, and benefits. The first one, we are up for negotiations this year. So we will start our negotiations with our support staff in late January. So this is one where I wish I could tell you what the exact time commitment is. It is, when it's happening, a pretty significant time commitment. And, you know, we are fortunate to have very positive relationships with both of our unions and their leaderships. And so we are typically able to settle our contracts within, you know, a reasonable amount of meetings. But every year is different. And so I can't tell you exactly how many meetings or how much time it would be.
So Pete, the support union contract expires July 31st this summer. Does the teacher's contract also expire July 31st this summer? Or is that one year off?
Nope.
They both have the same date. Okay. So the work really needs to be done for both separate negotiations by the end of the summer. But we really want that to be finished earlier. So you're going to start with the support union, hopefully come to consensus, that contract. We will get updated in executive session about how things are going. And then we'll take a formal vote altogether on that contract. And then, do you look at the work with the teacher negotiations happening concurrently? Or do you really try to conclude one contract before you start negotiations with the teachers?
We typically try to conclude one and then begin the other. We do anticipate the teacher contract negotiations happening, you know, kind of mid-spring or so is our hope. And again, the process is that when we do have a Negotiation Subcommittee, you are representing the, the full committee. And so if there are questions around the contract that require the input from the school committee, we would schedule an executive session to get the input of the full committee as we go forward.
All right. Who would like to serve on the Negotiation Subcommittee?
I would.
I would also. I have experience on the other end, so it would be great to be on this end, too.
And I'm happy to, to be a fill-in as well. I'm interested as well. So just throwing that out there, that I'm happy to, to do that if, if that is a need. And then are you looking for the same two people for both subcommittees?
Does not need to be.
Okay. So I'll throw that out for consideration. Well, first of all, are Justin and Dave, are you okay if?
Absolutely okay with it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So I, you know, I throw that out to Diane and CJ. I would be happy to serve on one or the other. If that is something that, I'm open to that, too. And I don't really have a preference which one. Actually, I'm a little more interested in the teacher contract. So that's, but I don't know what your, what your thoughts are.
If you want to do the teacher contract, that's fine.
Would you be okay if I did the Teacher Negotiation Subcommittee with Diane? And then you did the Support Union contract with Diane? You'd be okay with that?
Yeah. So I did the background with the, with the support system.
Okay. Diane, are you okay being on both?
Yes.
Okay. And Pete, that would, that would seem to work. We don't need to have the same two school committee members on both negotiations?
You don't. I will have to check with the attorney to see if it's appropriate for CJ to be negotiating with a group of which she was a former member, right? And so I'll, I'll ask the attorney for an advisory opinion on that. Okay?
Sometimes there just, there needs to be a gap, so.
Then I could do the.
Can you ask him if we could swap? And like CJ could be on the teacher one, and I would be on the support union one? Will you find out, just find out about that and then get back to us? When I.
Flip it, this way I wouldn't be on the support.
Yeah, when I was a teacher and I was in NEA, I could never serve on the Negotiation Subcommittee here, because I was a member. And then even right after I left the Teachers Union and became an administrator, it, for me, it felt like it was a little too soon, because I didn't want, it just. But now, like, I haven't been in the Teachers Union in nine years, because I'm an administrator, so. So.
Well, do you want to do this? Maybe I'll, I could do the Policy Review Subcommittee? You could do these, too?
So I definitely, my interest is very strong in policy. I'd really like to stay on that. I don't mind swapping with the, the negotiations. Like if you, and Pete will check, but if you wanted to do the teacher contract with Diane? And I could do the Support Union with Diane?
Right. Absolutely.
I don't think that that would be a contract, because those are two separate unions, like.
Correct. Right? And so, and again, it may be appropriate for, it may be allowable for CJ to do that. But I just want to make sure that there's no.
Well, that makes sense to me.
Appearance of anything being inappropriate there.
And I appreciate you being flexible. So Diane has definitely signed up for both. And then let's try to move forward with CJ being on the NEA teacher negotiation, and I'll be on the Support Union negotiation.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you. All right, the Recreation Advisory Board. They have a very static calendar. And I believe it really is Mondays, the first Monday of every month. Justin, can you give a soundbite about what that committee did and kind of the school committee liaison's role? And then we'll see who would like to do it, because we definitely only have one seat on that board.
Sure, yes. We have one seat. It's a non-voting member. The Town Council also has one seat. It's also a non-voting member. It's every month. You go through and you assist where you can in suggestions for how to like incorporate certain measures. Like it's sometimes a lot of the stuff, since it involves recreation, you know, summer programs and stuff for kids, you can kind of like try to help, you know, give suggestions for those kind of programs. I had a lot of good fun on it. It was a good committee. Work has driven me to. Work has driven me to not be able to attend as much as I want, so I don't, I would love, as much as I would love to continue, I cannot. So anyone else, you have, you have worked with good people and it's a, it's really big things are, you know, sometimes a couple of meetings involve the beach, but there's a lot of summer programs, winter programs, that kind of stuff, so.
All right, is there anyone who's interested in being our liaison for the Recreation Advisory Board?
I'm happy to do it, I work there part-time anyway, so happy to do that unless somebody else wants to. Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you CJ, we appreciate that. Okay, so our last School Committee Subcommittee is the Diversity and Equity Committee. Pete, can you give a soundbite about the high-level goal of that committee and the kind of, if they still are meeting perhaps quarterly on Thursdays virtually? Can you give us a soundbite?
It is quarterly meetings, and I am not sure when the next one is, but it's next quarter. And, you know, that is really looking at our efforts to make sure that we are having voice and representation of all of the different backgrounds of the students that we have within our schools. They've done some excellent work in terms of raising awareness of the different needs of our students within our school system. They've also done some great cultural awareness programming, so we've had all, we've worked really closely with First Works to bring all sorts of really neat things to our students. That committee is really driving some of that work, and is there anything you want to add, Gail?
You have to come up if you, because everybody's watching on TV.
We've been meeting on Wednesdays, and it's usually Zoom, like 3:45 until 4:45.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Is there anyone who's interested in, or we can have up to two members on that? Any School Committee members that are interested?
I'd be happy to participate.
Thanks, Dave. So we'll definitely have Dave. We can have a second person if someone was interested, we don't have to. Is there a second School Committee member who'd like to join Dave?
One is okay, like it's fine, we just want to make sure there is room for two if we have interest from two.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, well, I think that went very well, and I really appreciate everyone's willingness to participate. I think we've got a nice balance moving forward here, and thank you all. All right, so we are moving on with our next agenda item, which is Open Forum. It's now time for Open Forum, is there anyone that would like to speak? Come on up, I believe that's Ms. Bonanno, come on up.
Good evening, Susan Cicilline Bonanno, 9th secluded drive. I'm just here tonight because I'm thrilled to see the School Committee, and I just wanted to say congratulations to you all, and especially to the newest members CJ and David. I saw you on the campaign trail, and I'm really happy that you're a part of this committee. So I wish everybody the best of luck, and I look forward to seeing and hearing about all your great work in the Narragansett Schools, and I just wanted to say happy holidays to the entire school community. So I was just reflecting, Diane, on a long time ago, when I was sitting up there on the Narragansett School Committee doing policy with you, and you were fabulous. And so it brought back a lot of good memories because it was really great work, and it was real positive and real collaboration, so I wish you the same, and just yet to say that, so good night and good luck with your work.
Thank you very much. Next, that looks like Mr. Menzies, he looks familiar.
Definitely interesting being on this side of everything, and I have to say, this mic is, it's definitely different down here than it is up there. I can actually hear myself, which is weird.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, yes, thank you. For those who don't know who I am, Alex Menzies, 175 Indian Trail. Good evening, honorable members of the School Committee. On behalf of the Narragansett Town Council and the residents, I would like to formally congratulate you all on your election and swearing in earlier this week. I look forward to working with you to support Narragansett students, parents, teachers, and staff, and all members in our community. In commemoration for your achievement, I would like to present you all with your official service pins that are given out to all members who serve on our committees. Wear them well, and know how grateful we all are for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure, come on up.
He's so fun, I love it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice, thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Thanks so much.
Looks good this year.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for Open Forum? Okay, we are moving on. Okay, we're moving on to Oral Reports, and we're gonna start with our Student Liaison Report, Marco.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. First off, congratulations to all of you, and welcome to our new School Committee Members, Ms. Studino and Mr. Pavone, congratulations on your election, and I really look forward to working with you both, really representing the student body and providing some of my input from a student's perspective. A lot going on at the high school, winter sports have kicked off already. I had my first indoor track meet on Saturday, and I could not believe I was already back in the PCTA, it felt like I never left. Senior projects already have a documented five hours, so we're really moving quickly in that process as we're approaching winter break. I actually want to start off by thanking Ms. Wilson and the Elementary School, who really gave me and my local karate instructor, Steve Babcock, the wonderful opportunity to run a six-week enrichment program, and we really had a great time working with all the students, getting to know them. I've been doing this since the karate, since the age of dreams, and I've been doing this program for about three to four years now. And we invited all of them to our dojo after the six-week program, and I'm just so excited that we ended up having 14 students signed up and take that to the next level. So we're really looking forward to working with them. One thing going on at the high school this Friday, actually, is our Festive Friday Celebration. So this happened, this started last year, it was put together by Mr. Fiore and the Peer-to-Peer Group, where they just have a variety of activities that we have the opportunity to participate in to support mental health, so we can go watch the movie Elf in the auditorium, there is a hot cocoa bar in the cafeteria, puzzles with the teachers, different activities, it's just gonna be a really great time to support that. One thing that I was really looking forward to this month was the World Languages Field Trip to New York City. So to give some background on that, for the past 30 years, I believe 30 years or so, juniors and seniors in World Language classes at the high school really anticipate this field trip. So I did get to go on this trip last year, and this is a great opportunity to learn about different cultures, develop into global citizens, and learn about different places around the world, because we visit two museums, the Natural Museum of History and Metropolitan Museum of Art, so it really immerses us in culture. I have to say, Ms. Beaufort and the World Language Department worked really hard to make this possible. Unfortunately, this was postponed due to the challenges with transportation. I think it was, there were some issues with making sure that transportation was number one affordable, but also reliable. We wanted to go, we really wanted to go in December to see New York City, see Rockefeller Center, we have a great time down there, and I just really would have enjoyed to go my senior year. So if there's any way, maybe in the future, we can do a little bit more fundraising on that or more support, so we can make that happen in December, that would be great. But the Foreign Language Department does hope to have that trip run in early, late February, early March, so hopefully we can do it then. And winter sports, like I said, underway, we have boys and girls basketball, wrestling, boys and girls hockey, and boys and girls indoor track. I've been a member of this indoor track team for the past four years now, and it's called indoor track, but it's not totally inside. You know, every year we have lots of challenges with different practice arrangements, right? We don't actually have a indoor facility to practice in. The gym during that time is used for basketball practices, and the cafeteria is really tricky because it's a small space, there's a lot of tables in there. If we move them, we have to put them exactly back where we were, we don't want to do that. When there's heavy rain or snow, practices are often canceled, that impacts the performance of the team as a whole. So I did reach out to the Athletic Directors to see if there was anything we could do. They provided me with a lot of great detail, Mr. Mahar, Mr. Hummel are really working hard to try and find a solution, and, you know, their dedication is just really appreciated by all the Narragansett athletes. They reach out to University of Rhode Island every year to gain access to their indoor track. However, their time slots are very limited as their athletic department isn't administered, as the track isn't administered by their athletic department, which makes it very difficult for outside groups like us and other South County schools to access. So if there's some way, maybe we can, you know, work with them, look into possible solutions, I would really look forward to that, and just someplace that allows us to train consistently. One of the coaches was actually successful in getting a few time slots last year over the break, but that's, you know, not the easiest thing, she's gonna try and do the same this year, you know, hopefully we can make something happen. So as we head into the new year, I recently joined Mr. Fiore's Principal's Council, where he hears different feedback from students on different things, where he gets to hear that student's perspective. So as we head into the new year, I look forward to collecting some data from those meetings, hearing some things, and putting some data together for you in January just about what students are thinking. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them on this, and I want to thank Ms. Ruggiero for sending the November report out, if you have any questions on that. That was about the Athletic Home Games I wrote about, I have that with me for any questions, so I'd be more than happy to take that. Really excited to head into 2025, which will be my graduating year, so, yeah, thank you.
So I don't have any questions about your report, but I have a comment and then just a question for you. So comment is, I really enjoy your reports, they're very succinct, they cover a lot of different topics, and I really appreciate that because, you know, this is exactly what we're hoping, we didn't want it to be like one little narrow view of like one thing, we want it to be more broad about what's happening in the school, and you've done a really good job with that, so thank you. And it's succinct, it's detailed, your delivery is fantastic, it's very impressive. So that's just my comment and my feedback. My personal question, and I'm sorry if you answered it last month, but if you decided what you're doing next year, have you had any early acceptances yet, is it too early? Do you know what you're gonna do next year?
Great question. So I did apply for early action to all my schools, which most of them, that was a December 1st deadline. Most of them were pretty much all in Rhode Island, so that's URI, Rick, Roger Williams, Bryant, and I applied to Florida Gulf Coast too. So I am waiting to hear back, I did hear, I did get my first acceptance into Roger Williams with the Presidential Scholarship, so was really excited about that, and I really look forward to getting those, those will be coming after the holidays, and, you know, URI is definitely my number one, I think that's what I want to go into. Great school, great program for me, I want to go into Communications Marketing Area, I mean, pretty similar to this, so, yeah.
Congratulations for getting accepted three days after you applied to that prestigious school, so good for you, that's awesome, congratulations. Are there any other questions or feedback or comments for Marco?
Yes, I just have a quick question on the Narragansett Elementary School Karate Sessions, and you said they last for six weeks, is that long enough for a student to earn a belt? Or do they get, how far along do they get?
So these are students that they sign up for this program, and we just teach them, we go in there and we teach them a lot of basics, we play a lot of really fun games, and they don't earn a belt during that six-week program. However, they do earn invitation to our dojo, where we host a very nice graduation ceremony, we welcome the parents, all this, actually, a lot of the students showed up this year, and we present them with a little medal and a gift certificate and little prizes, and we play games at the end, so it's a little reward for them, and if they're interested in taking it further, they have that opportunity to sign up and join us.
And then you mentioned the issue in the November report about the imbalance between home and away games, has there been any explanations or follow-up on that that you know of?
No follow-up yet on anything, I look forward to continuing to working into that. Just kind of what brought that on was as throughout the fall, me and a couple of other students were noticing we had maybe a few less football games than usual, I mean, maybe it's just me, but I believe we had one in September, our homecoming game, one Thursday night in October, and one Friday night in October. Luckily, it ended up being a lot more because they made the playoffs, they had that home-field advantage, and they went all the way to the Super Bowl. It just seems like, if you look at the numbers, the use, when it comes to the use of Zep Field and the athletic facility, it seemed a little unbalanced with home and away, and it was just something I was curious about, I didn't know if anybody knew, it was just some of my thoughts.
Any other questions or comments for Marco?
I did have a question on the indoor track. You mentioned the University of Rhode Island being an option, but it's difficult to schedule. Is there another facility that would meet your needs? In the local area?
So, I mean, even just a local gymnasium or just something where we have some space to, you know, get something in. I know the PCTA up in Providence does do some open gyms, that's, however, that's during the holiday break, and that's limited also. And that is also a trip, that's a hike, that's, you know, then we have to worry about transportation and the cost of that, and so I would really look forward into looking some of those solutions, just not quite sure yet. Hopefully Coach McAllister will get some URI time slots this year.
Okay, good luck with that.
Anything else for Marco?
I just want to say how impressed I am, no use since preschool, so, my goodness, I always do though.
Thank you, look forward to working with you, both of you.
Yes, me too.
All right, thank you. So we're moving on to School Committee Reports. I'm happy to give a quick soundbite about our Joint School Committee Town Council Budget Workshop. We had that right here this past Monday night, right after we got sworn in, and I was really excited about the collaborative spirit and the enthusiasm and great questions that we had, and just really look forward to that open communication. It's great to see two Town Council Members here tonight, we appreciate that. So please, as we said at Monday's meeting, if you have any questions all throughout budget season, please reach out to Dr. Cummings or any of us, and we'll make sure that we send out our dates to the Town Council for our budget workshops, when Dr. Cummings is presenting to us in February, when we're voting in March, because we won't sit down formally again with the Town Council till probably April, but we're really excited to working with the new Town Council. And then are there, we haven't, are there any other School Committee Subcommittee Reports that anyone else has to give? Okay, all right, so we are on to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Cummings.
Great, thank you, and, you know, Marco, as a former track coach and track athlete with daughters who are college track athletes, I totally sympathize, indoor is not really indoor, right? And so, but we certainly want to support our athletes in accessing facilities as best we can, and I know Matt and Abby work hard to do that, right? So I am pleased to, speaking of athletics, so I'm pleased to announce that we have been approved to have a new CTA, CTA, CTE program. So we have been approved to have a Sports Medicine and Athletic Training CTE program, where students will, who are interested in medicine or physical therapy or other medical or rehabilitation fields, can get hands-on experience, earn credentials, and kind of get an early launch. and kind of get an early launch on both exploring that interest and being able to use that for their resume should they want to pursue that for post-secondary training. So, go ahead.
I want to ask a question about that program when you're done.
Yep, go ahead.
So just want to make sure everyone hears that. That's a really big deal, that we got approved for another CTE program. That's amazing.
Yes.
And it's really exciting as we look at, you know, the diversity of the different CTE programs. So my question is, for the kids that are currently, or, so for September, are we looking for students entering ninth grade only? Or if there is a freshman at Narragansett High School now who wants to enter the program as a sophomore, can they do it? Or because it's brand new and we're trying to build it from the ground up, do, are you going to limit enrollments just to rising incoming grade nine?
We are not limiting enrollment. Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth. That's okay. And so because the way that our CTE programs work, and this is true for all of our CTE programs, it is a three to four course sequence. And so if there is enough time in a student's schedule, beginning, kind of if they want to enter after freshman year, if we can lay out a program plan where they can complete the required credentials within the time they have left in our school, then we are able to work with them to be a part of our CTE program. So I anticipate that there will be current students at Narragansett High School or even other regional schools that find an interest in this and will want to be applying for that program. Right? So it will be for incoming eighth grader, incoming ninth graders, current eighth graders, as well as students who may have an interest in that who are already in high school. So we're really, we're really excited about that. Kudos to Chris, to Connor McCloskey, to really the staff, John O'Brien, the staff at the high school, for pulling together that opportunity for our students.
And I will say, whoever is responsible for the marketing, the branding, has done a great job even with this. Is this Lauren or is this?
That is Lauren.
It's really cool. I mean, it's really, you know, that's great. And I may be stealing your thunder again. This open house that's on the flyer for February 5th, is that only to learn about this program? Or were you going to go into that next?
It's about all of our programs.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
And so, you know, we do have an open house on February 5th. We do have all of our CTE programs, which include agri-science, our amazing FFA program, our information, our IT and computer science program, our digital media program, our education program, and our plumbing program, right? In addition to now this new one, athletic training programs. There are lots of opportunities, depending on your interest, lots of pathways to really, again, explore what you may want to do after high school and earn some credentials along the way that can lead to employment both during high school, after high school, and while someone is doing further training. And so, again, we're really excited about that. Another thing that we're excited about right now, are there any other questions about that program? Let me pause there.
And just one, are we looking into any articulation or agreements with post-secondary for the new program?
We are. So we're in the early stages of that, but we do have a great partner with, is it OPT? With the University of Orthopedics. And so students will get hands-on kind of experience with the University of Orthopedics. And we will certainly explore other ways for students to get credentials, including college credit. Okay, other questions? Great. So just today, RIDE came out with their school ratings. And so we will go over that further in our January meeting. So our elementary and our high school both received four stars. They were a hair's breadth away from reading, from receiving the highest rating. RIDE makes it a little bit difficult to get that fifth star. But, you know, we're really proud of their progress. And the middle school was at three stars. And that's pretty typical for lots of middle schools within the, within the state. We actually, this year, there was a lot of dropping of ratings for middle schools across the state. And our, our middle school remained at three stars. Room for growth there. But we'll go into really details about that, and you'll hear a little bit about that tonight when Gail comes up and talks about the assessments. Those are one part of, but not the entirety of the whole accountability ratings. And then finally, you know, we are in full swing on the budget process. And so we met with the town council last week. We are working with our principals on getting ready for our budget presentation, budget workshops at the end of January, beginning of February. And finally, we have lots going on, as you saw in your principal reports. But, you know, with music, with arts, art shows, band concerts, choir concerts, athletic events. It's a really busy time of year, but a really exciting, exciting time in our schools. You know, the, when you walk around the schools this week, there's a lot of really happy students, happy teachers, you know, really getting ready. I don't know if they're kind of drinking in, having a longer-than-usual holiday break, but also really kind of enjoying the season. So it's a great time in the schools right now. So with that, I'll pass the baton to Gail, who is going to give you an overview of our state assessment results. And, you know, along the way, please ask questions on either Gail or I will be able to answer them.
That was just our question is, are you okay if we kind of like pause and interrupt you if we have a question on a particular slide? Pete just said it was fine.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Okay. So I know you all had the slide deck before. That was purposeful because it's such a long slide deck. I wanted you to have time to really look at it. So let's talk about state assessments. So the why. So why do we have the state assessments? First of all, it is required, so we have to give them per ride. But the results really help us to track a student's progress over time. Because remember, these assessments start in grade three. So we really can track how the students have done going from grade three to four and all the way to their experience in the high school. The results help us to compare our scores with other schools across the state. And this is helpful because if there's a school that is perhaps doing better than we are, we can go visit them, see what they're doing, get some takeaways for us to use back here in Narragansett. And also, the most important probably one is it helps us to really make some decisions about what we're doing with our students instructionally. It helps us with our planning for teacher professional development. So just quickly, what type of scores are we looking at? So the RICAS, which is giving in grades three through eight. And then at the high school level, we have the PSATs and the SATs. And then we have our science scores, which are given in grades five, eight, and 11. And of course, there's some other tests that go on, like the, the access and the, for students who are multi-language learners. And then we also have the alternate assessment for some of our students with significant academic needs. But first, before we get into the results, I just wanted to point out some, some more kudos in addition to the star ratings that Dr. Cummings just spoke of. You probably have all heard of NISH, which is an independent rating organization that rates districts throughout the state. And in a recent review, Narragansett was rated as the district that had the top 3% nationally for best teachers and top 10% for best district in their results that were published recently. And also, with the College Board Advanced Placement Honor Roll, we were a rating of silver, which is very prestigious. And we were actually gold in two out of the three categories. And this is a huge accomplishment for us because in the past few years, we have added quite a few AP courses. Just to show you some of the AP courses' numbers from 2020 to 2024. In 2020, we had about 100 students taking AP courses. And last year, that number bumped up to 143. Additionally, I'm still on the kudo part here. Students who had scores of three plus, which is what you're really looking for in AP exam, is a score of three plus. We've gone from 67 students in 2020 to 97 students in 2024. This profile, I'm just going to gloss over because I'm going to get into the weeds of it in the next couple of slides. But if, on your own, you wanted to just have a quick view, this shows our results from 2019. Of course, there were some COVID years in between that we didn't take state assessments to 2024. So you can see how we have done year to year.
Gail, you mentioned that the SAT design had changed. Do you know how it changed?
Go ahead.
Pretty significantly. And so what has happened is that the SAT is not really directly comparable with previous years. It has become one of the, the tests that kind of follows, because it is now online, right? It kind of gives a answer based on your previous answer, right? And so if you get one right, you get a harder one. If you get one wrong, you get the easier one. And so because of that dynamic scoring piece, you know, there's lots of factors that now go into that score that weren't previously there. So let's say, for example, you get, you know, there's four hard questions within a section. You get three of them wrong and you get one of them right. The, the program assumes that you're guessing and doesn't give you credit for it.
If you guess right?
Even if you guess right. And so what now happens is that whereas you used to be rewarded, right? Because you weren't getting points off if you got something wrong, now you do, right? And so the scoring mechanism is very different. The, the whole nature of the test is different. While the content is the same, the way that the test is given and the way the test is scored is significantly different. And so we are still, you know, learning a lot about that. But the point being, it's really hard, it's really apples and oranges in terms of scores of previous SAT scores and current ones.
And just one more piece before I get into the scores. RIDE this year, when they released the scores, also did some reporting on chronically absent students and how that affected the scores that they received, either on the RICAS or the SATs. And shocking, they found that if you are chronically absent, you, your scores are lower because you need to be in school to learn. And that did affect some of our students who were chronically absent. And there's a difference between being chronically absent for three years. They showed when the absenteeism went down, the scores went up. So just kind of keep that in mind, too, that we are looking closely at student attendance because it, it has a direct effect on their performance. So the first set of scores is for science. And once again, these scores are taken from students in grade five, eight, and 11 only, but it is cumulative. So for example, the grade five scores really are cumulative of what they learned in science, K through five. And then grade eight is what they learned, five through eight, and so on. Science scores just within the state weren't that great. We had some nice increases at, at the middle school. And we are working to get those same types of increases at the peers, at the high school. So what we've done in the past couple of years to give students more experience is we've had them enrolled in the interim science assessments that the state has provided. And this gives them direct practice with assessment-like questions in, in real time with what they're learning in the class. So if they're on a specific topic in the class, the teacher is able to pull that interim assessment for that particular topic and give students the exposure. We think the difference between why maybe the scores went up, this is all hypothetical, but why we think the scores went up in the middle school and not the high school, is we've had a, a coach from GemsNet come down. And every time they do one of those interim assessments, really debrief with the teachers about where the students did well, where they didn't do well, how is the pacing, and so on. We don't have that partnership with, with the high school because GemsNet doesn't go that far. So this year, what I've done is invited the science fellow from RIDE. And he will be coming down in February and doing that debrief with the science teachers at the high school. So we can really look at, okay, where are we with the pacing, you know? What haven't we gotten to? What can we put in? Where did the students do well? And so on. So we're hoping that might be the missing piece. In addition, we are looking at high-quality curriculum materials in science because we need to have them in place soon. We have done a pilot this year with OpenSciEd in the middle school. And the teachers are using either one to three units of OpenSciEd this year in partnership with GemsNet. They like it. So we are going to be continuing with OpenSciEd in the high school, in the middle school next year in hopes that those units will start to be released in the high school and at the elementary school. Yes.
A question about the interim assessments. So when the students take some of those sample questions, do the teachers get the scores right away, like on their dashboard? Do the kids see their scores too? Or they just answer the questions and then on the teacher dashboard, they see the?
I'm not sure if the kids see them right away. I know the teachers see them right away.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Our scores compared to the state, I mean, we are still above the state in science. But as you can see, with the state being at 31.2% and us at 46.9%, we still have a ways to go as a state in how we do with science. I know you like to know how our neighboring districts are doing, so I pulled this up. And you can see we're like, we're right with the pack of our neighboring districts, pretty much, on how we did on the science assessments. RICAS. So RICAS, as you said, started in grade three and they go through grade eight. Let's talk about ELA first. So some nice scores at the elementary school in grade three, particularly for ELA. They had 73.7% of students either at or above proficiency. And grade four had 57.1%. Both of these are significantly above the state. As far as our middle school, we are still above the state, but we, we have some work to do here. And we do have some plans in place for raising these scores at the middle level. But we did have some nice gains in certain grade levels at the middle school. For example, in our ELA scores, we had a growth in proficiency from seventh to eighth grade ELA scores. So that was nice to see. And we also had some growth in math that I'll, I'll show you in a few minutes. So math for Narragansett Elementary School, grade three, once again, had some great scores at 82.5% at or above proficiency, followed by our fourth grade at 66.2, way above the state. In our peer school, once again, still above the state, but we do have some growth that we need to continue to work on. And once again, we have some plans that are in place to bring those scores up in the future. However, there were some increases in math at the peer school that you can see from this chart. So for example, in our current grade eight students, you can see how their scores increased from grade seven and so on, from, that's what this chart shows here. As far as our neighboring districts, once again, pretty much in the pack of how we were doing with Exeter West Greenwich, South Kingston, North Kingston, and Charahoe. Moving on to PSAT, this is very exciting for us. I usually don't include PSAT in the slide deck, but couldn't resist. For ELA, we had 86.2 of our students meeting or exceeding expectations. That, that's really fantastic. So there's, there's a lot of hope coming up there in that, in that cohort. Way above the state at 58.7. In math, not as high, still way above the state. We had 50% of our students meeting or exceeding expectation. This is still PSAT, way above the state at 24.5. In our SATs, we had 68.6 meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, again, above the state. Math, not quite as high. We have some, some things in place. If you'd like me to get into them, I'm happy to share with you for our math scores. And I thought you'd be interested in this chart. This is combined math and ELA for SATs. So just looking at spring of 2021 as compared to spring of 2024. So just looking at spring of 2021 as compared to spring of 2024, students who met one benchmark has increased significantly, and students who met no benchmark has decreased significantly. And our mean scores have also increased from 2021 to 2024. And the slide shows our neighboring districts in the SAT math and SAT ELA. So next steps. So when these scores come out, myself and the coaches and Dr. Cummings and the principals, we work on really doing some nice data digs, not just this quick overview like you're all seeing tonight, but we disaggregate the data by cohorts and by teacher and by course. And then we meet with the teachers and go over the data with them. And then we make plans, plans for professional development, plans for coaching, plans for new curriculum materials, to try to move these scores. Because even though we had some great highlights, there are certain pockets that we know we can do better in.
So I will say, you know, our teachers and our administrators do a great job of really using this as an indicator and as data to think about what are we doing with our teaching and learning processes. They take it really seriously. We take it really seriously. You know, there are some things to celebrate here. There are also some things we're really worried about. And so in particular, you know, kind of looking at some of the patterns in ELA in, at the middle level, that's worrisome because that's always been an area of strength for us. You know, some of it, we can attribute to some of the RIDE requirements for putting in new curricula. Some of it also, though, has to do with intervention, has to do with, you know, some of the expectations that we set forth for what students are doing. And the same holds true in mathematics. You know, we are pleased that we've seen some good growth in math, and we continue to see that. The, some of these indicators aren't always showing the depth of the learning that some of our students are doing. And again, it's a dipstick of one day, but it's an important dipstick. And so Gail and our coaches have done a really nice job of sitting at each grade level, going over what's happening with them, and thinking hard about what we need to change, what we need to strengthen based on those pieces. We're also really looking at a, a lot of our scheduling models and kind of thinking about, do we need more time for ELA? Do we need more time for mathematics? How are we incorporating the science in elementary school? And really going through those pieces. So again, these are really important indicators. We do a lot of work with this data. Happy to answer any questions that you have, but we really do fully understand that in some areas, it's just not acceptable performance. And we have to make some changes to make sure that things are getting better for our students. The happy news, and Gail, could you go back to the cohort data? Go back just a little bit more. One forward, I think.
This one?
Yes. Right? So when you start to track students over time, you know, what we do see is that, you know, some pretty strong performance, you know, in upper elementary school, a little bit of a dip in five and six, and then they start to climb back out of that. That's pretty typical of what patterns are seen across the state, but it's a pattern that we need to solve, right? And so through that transition into early middle school, for reason, for lots of reasons, we start to see a little bit of a dip there. And we are really digging into the research, trying to figure out how we address that transition gap going forward.
I had a question about the timing that we made the switch to the curriculum resources. So for ELA, we switched from Teachers College, how many years ago was it? Was it two years? Was it three years?
Are you talking just elementary school?
Yeah, well, so at each building. So can you just tell us, all right, elementary school, about how long ago was the curriculum resource change for the third and fourth grade kids who are tested?
Last year. So last year was the first year that we had full implementation of CKLA through Amplify. That was the first year of that.
So these testing results are in the first year of a new program.
And then was there a change in the math curriculum resource at the elementary school?
No, we've been, we've had bridges for a couple of years, so no switch there.
And then at the middle school, what was the timing of the change for, from Teachers College to, what are we using now at the middle school for ELA and math?
So we have the Savis product, My Perspectives. And we also use Savis Envisions in math. And that has been implemented a couple of years. It's not the first year. It's probably year three or four. It's not new for them. And the high school, even longer.
What we are seeing, Tammy, in, particularly in grade seven and eight, is some increased performance are, and also in grade nine in algebra, even though it's not a tested grade. Some really nice progress by students who are in the classes of teachers who are using the Thinking Classrooms approach. And so we're really seeing some nice growth in those, whereas we had previously just kind of seen seventh and eighth grade scores continuing to dip on that kind of middle school trend. If you think four or five years ago, we had some significant concerns about what was happening in grade seven and eight mathematics. You know, now we're seeing those trends well above the, the region and well above the state. And so we really do attribute that to, you know, our teachers at that level have done an excellent job. We're really in the vanguard of trying to switch their approach to teaching, to build student engagement, build rigor, and really promote problem solving and thinking and not just following an algorithm. And we've started to see some results of that.
It's just interesting to look at like the different cohorts. So at the state level, the poor scores at the middle level are alarming at the state level. That's astounding. So it is interesting, you know, kids that are at the peer school now had Teachers College at the elementary school as a resource, and then have had that pivot. So it'll be interesting to see, like, the third grade scores here, super strong. So it'll be interesting, you know, now as the teachers get more comfortable with these RIDE-approved resources, if we'll see like what the trend is. So that third grade trend that is extremely high right now is they progress into the middle school with the new curriculum resource. You know, it's interesting. It's hard when, you know, kids have, and teachers have taught with one curriculum resource, then you phase it, you make a change, and then the children had one experience in the elementary school, and then it changes at the middle level. It's just interesting. But, but statewide, the middle school stores, scores, the state average is alarming. That's holy cow.
And with the curriculum materials, for example, CKLA that we had last year is our first year. Then we were able to take time during summer curriculum academy, and the coach meets with the, the elementary school twice a month, and we have a PD day coming. My point being, no curriculum material that you buy is 100% everything that we want. So now that we've gone through it for a year, now we're making some other changes, still doing it with integrity, but saying, oh, we need to add more of this, 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 and this because it seems to be missing. So usually by the end of year two, we have that in, in really good shape, which is, I think, why we're seeing some of those nice trends up at the, at the high school level with the PSATs.
Any other questions at all for Gail or for Pete? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Dr. Cummings, is there anything else that, for your superintendent's report?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we're moving on to the consent agenda. So for our new committee members, we're going to do a motion, and then we'll do a second, and then there'll be a discussion. And then during the discussion, if there's any questions in any of the consent agenda items, that's the time where you can say, hey, I have a question on, you know, it's all numbered in your pack. It was CA 1A, CA 2A. So we'll do a motion, we'll do a second to move it to the discussion. Then if you have any questions, that'll be the time before we take a vote to kind of approve it as a whole. And then if there's ever, you know, any one item that you're super concerned about, we can pull that out, too. So that's kind of how that works. So I'm going to make the motion first. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the consent agenda items, CA 1A, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
So moved.
So Justin moved the motion. Diane seconded that. So now it's a discussion. So do any school committee members have any questions on any consent agenda items in your packet before we take a vote to accept them? Okay.
Not a question, but just to help also inform our new members. So we have a couple of items that are usually routine, that fall under consent approval minutes from last meeting. We have a maintenance report that's just what happened, you know, happened in the buildings over the time, enrollment and budget transfers, anything, you know, over $10,000, you know, or something like that, or under $10,000. So that's what's on the here tonight. That's what you would expect going forward. So we're part of it, so.
And we only get our packet, you know, just a few days before the meeting. So if you're ever going through your packet and you have a question right away, it's appropriate for you to reach out to Pete, or you can hold it and ask your question during the meeting. All right. Any other questions or comments before we vote on the, to accept the consent agenda items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening, everybody. Expenditures for the five months ended November 30th, 2024, total $10,427,954. And that's 28.27% of our budget. Expenditures and encumbrances, total $29,987,777. And that's 81.28% of the budget.
So again, this is a very, very, very high-level snapshot. And we are going to be unpacking the budget that they're just starting to work on in much more detail at our budget workshops and so forth. But if you ever, you know, have any questions, like very high level, if you reach out to Karen, she'll be happy to kind of go through, you know, what each of these things mean. It's a little bit confusing, but we like to, you know, just kind of publicly give the snapshot of here's our budget, how much have we spent. And then you'll see in our packet that if there's any transfers over a certain dollar amount, we'll see that. There's all sorts of reporting rules that sometimes we have to vote on certain amounts and so forth. But you'll see every month that Karen will just give this very, very high-level snapshot. But if you're ever looking for, okay, well, what does this actually mean? I know Karen would be happy to do an appointment with you and kind of answer any kind of detailed questions for you. So that, Karen just reports that if anyone has any questions, but we don't vote to accept it. It's just her kind of update. All right. Any questions for Karen for the moment? Okay. Thank you, Karen. So we're going to go on to school committee business. It'll be the same thing. We'll make a motion. Hopefully someone will move it for a second into a discussion. So is there, school committee business item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the NHS girls hockey team's overnight tournament trip to Martha's Vineyard from January 17th through January 19th, 2025? You want to move the motion?
I move that motion, yes.
Okay, discussion. So we've got some information in our packet, I think. Do we? Am I...
You do.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Or Pete, this is a new trip. Do you want to give a little soundbite? Or the high school principal, someone want to give us a soundbite?
Sure can. So this is a very well-organized trip. So we are very proud of our women's hockey team. They have had a couple of great seasons for the last three years. It is a co-op team. And so their coach is excellent, very highly organized. We have a wonderful group of boosters with that program as well. So they have raised money so that our team can start to get some experience in getting some higher-level competition from out of state, hopefully supercharging them towards a state championship this year. And so this is an opportunity for them over Columbus State Weekend to go out to Martha's Vineyard, where there is a regional, I'm not sure if it's national, I think it's a regional hockey tournament. And, you know, Chris has worked closely with Matt and with the coach to ensure that, you know, all bases are covered here. I have confidence that they, that this is a safe trip for students, that is well-organized, that, you know, parents will be there as kind of helping the chaperone and also just kind of cheering their kids on. So, you know, happy to take any questions that you have about that. Either Chris or I could answer them.
I just have a comment first. This is a huge co-op team. That's very, very exciting. And it's a great picture. I remember when we first voted to form the co-op, and I think Sharon McGreen's husband was the coach, and I think we...
Yeah, I just remember Sharon and Brooke was on the team.
Yeah, I think we only had, I feel like, three to five...
Four. I was going to say four students.
Four Narragansett girls, and they were co-opping with another school. I mean, this is impressive.
Yes.
So my question is, can you tell us the other school districts that we co-op with for girls hockey?
So it is Narragansett, South Kingstown, North Kingstown, and Charahoe, I believe? Oh, and Proud.
I do remember that, too.
Charahoe is not part of us. Nope.
Yeah, I remember we had that.
Oh, right. There's points.
I remember we had the discussion about all the schools sharing the cost of the ice fee for the boys. Is that true for the girls' team, too?
Yes. So we have equitable ice time for our boys and for our girls. And so we do share the cost with the other schools.
I remember that very well. Yes, I think this, I was amazed at the number of girls going. It seems like a very well-organized weekend.
They put a lot of work into this. We're really excited for them.
Hope they have a good time then.
Yeah, I noticed their crossings are in late afternoon or early evening. And so I would just recommend that you tell the girls to bundle up.
Yes.
Because I've done that January crossing, and it's cold.
They're used to cold. They're in the ice rink all the time. Yeah. Well, I think this is very exciting. This is a big deal. So I think that's, I think it's a great trip, and I agree with everyone. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 5-0. All right. Well, principal, thank you for waiting till the very end of the night for one of a very important item coming up next. So next, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the updated 25-26 program of studies for Narragansett High School?
Motion to accept.
Discussion. Okay. Ready for our discussion?
So I'd like to invite Chris up. And so the high school program of studies, as you well know, is really the compendium that students kind of go through in order to kind of choose their classes for the following year. We're starting to get into that whole piece. Chris will highlight, you know, any kind of major changes for you. One of the things I'll remind you of is that our current freshman class has a different set of requirements than our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. There's been significant changes to the state requirements in terms of what our current ninth graders have to do, including four years of mathematics, which was not required before, three years of lab sciences, which was not required before. You know, there's a whole listing that's within the program of studies, two years of word language. So there are a lot of pieces that we've expanded our programming. One thing, and I don't want to steal Chris's thunder, but one thing that you saw in the outcomes is that we've significantly increased our offerings of advanced placement courses over the years. We have lots of students taking advantage of that. The work that we put into adjusting our schedule two years ago now that allowed students to have more electives and more flexibility in the courses that they're taking, we are starting to see the dividends of those changes because our schedule is more flexible, so students have more opportunities to take rigorous courses. So with that, I'll pass it off to Chris.
Thank you. Good evening. The program of studies has pretty much remained intact. Some of the changes that have gone into it are to sort of better explain the expectations that we have for our students. We included the portrait of a graduate results that we spent the spring working with that committee very closely and, and all those hours and getting the support from all the constituents in the community. So proudly displaying that, and we're going to work on ways in which to sort of use that to enrich the instruction that we offer. The CTE programs have been another area of focus because that's something that's getting increasingly more competitive. Obviously, we already spoke about the sports medicine athletic training program. Obviously, we already spoke about the Sports Medicine Athletic Training Program, but we've tried to bolster some of the courses in some of the other programs as well. For example, we have a new course in ed prep, and our maritime courses, a Foundations of Education in the ed prep course, and then Advanced Marine Technology in the maritime courses, which is sort of coming as like an offshoot of our plumbing program. This, this course is, they're basically going to build a boat. It's like boat building kits and everything, and, you know, they're going to do a lot of work, and it really does cross over a lot in terms of the skills that they learn in plumbing and with our, our connection with EB. The computer program as well, that CTE program, again, because of the changes that Dr. Cummings mentioned, and the computer requirements for graduation now, we had to combine some of the courses and bring some of those skills together to streamline that course, because that's something that basically is going to become like a freshman computer course, and that would satisfy their requirement, even though they can go on to other areas within that program. We added another AP course, AP Macroeconomics, that's in the Social Studies Program. So there's been a little bit of an interest there, so we're going to gauge, and obviously all of these courses depend on course selection, which we'll be doing as soon as we return in January. In, in the arts program, we added a painting and a ceramics three. Ceramics is one of our most popular courses that students sign up for, we already have one and two. So there's actually been some strong interest in actual, a third level of that where they do some more intricate work. And then we had eliminated for last year French IV and Spanish IV, those are two honors classes, and we were feeding students into our AP program. The teachers really felt that the students could do the work because the courses sort of mirror each other a lot. And I think that some of the students had really expressed a little bit of stress that it was one more AP class. So we're offering them, I don't know that they're going to run, it's going, it's all going to depend on the numbers, but it's a French IV and Spanish IV honors program that would be yet another level where some students can go to AP, and then some students can kind of continue on and get that fourth level of language, because our students are really in droves applying to the most competitive colleges. And in order to do that, we want to make sure that they have four levels of a language, so that puts them in the best possible situation once their application is being reviewed. So it's, it's one more opportunity for our students to learn, be better prepared, and make sure that they succeed, you know, at the post-secondary level.
So questions or comments from the school committee?
I have first a comment and then just a few questions. And I just want to say the depth and the breadth of our course offerings is so very impressive. As I was reading through it, I kept finding myself thinking, I wish I could take that course, especially in high school. Fantastic.
Thank you.
You referenced the new work-based learning for the new high school graduation requirements. Has RIDE issued any guidelines on how the 80 hours is supposed to fit into a student's schedule?
They can get certain hours from the courses that they take. So for example, our CTE students are pretty much going to be taken care of. But there are a number of courses that do cross over that our students take where they're going to be gaining hours from that as well. So once you start to look at what the options are in order to gain the hours, it, it sounds a little overwhelming, but it's definitely doable. And I, I think RIDE is also sort of doubling back and making some exceptions in terms of what's mandatory and what's accepted and what's hopeful. So, you know, I think there's going to be a little leeway with that, I'm not sure that that's 100% official yet, but I think that's in the pike.
But it does have to be done within the school year as opposed to a summer job?
There, there are other ways that they can get them done, yes, outside of school, yeah, definitely.
And then on page eight about the common assessments, that last sentence that says to meet the school's 21st century learning expectations, is that being replaced by the new Portrait of the Graduate?
Yes.
As opposed to that older document we used to use?
Yes, yeah, the portrait, that's basically, it, now, what we had there in its place, such as the, the learning expectations that used to be there, that's sort of taking the place for the 21st century expectations now, is the Portrait of a Graduate.
Yeah, so we can make that correction.
And then with digital media, along with the OSHA certifications, are we working on other concurrent enrollments, articulated credit, or other credentials for digital media?
Yeah, I know that Mr. Jennings is, is trying to recruit more people, and he's trying to get some more industry partners to be able to come in. This year, he worked with someone who was a former graduate who's actually in the business to come and talk to the students. And so we're, we're, we're taking our time with the program because we, we kind of want to do it right, but we do have to sort of like build up some of those connections to give them greater opportunities, because there, there are some real internship opportunities in that field and that area that would definitely benefit the students.
And then referencing the maritime courses, are we working towards asking for approval for our CTE program in the maritime, or are they just, I know that we have a sequence of courses and we have a credential linked to it, but I don't think we've been officially approved yet, or are we going down that path?
Right, and I, and I think that's, that's sort of up for debate a little bit, because we've been talking about that, and there's different pathways that we could possibly take based on how the plumbing program continues and things of that nature.
Right, so where that is, and actually I was gratified that our, our athletic training program got approved, because in, there's not, there are a set of old standards that are being phased out, and a set of new standards at the state level that are being phased in, athletic training is actually one of the newer standards that hasn't been officially adopted yet, but will be officially adopted yet in the spring. And so thus they gave us the opportunity to be one of the vanguard of the new standards by doing this athletic training program. We anticipate that there will be expanded opportunities for CTE programs in marine sciences, because right now, the only thing that can get approved is shipbuilding. And so, you know, we don't have, the, the level of infrastructure that is required in order to have the shipbuilding, CTE doesn't fit what is available to us, that's usually at a CTE center. And so, but when you look at the new standards, there are more opportunities for us, along with, you know, aquaculture, there are other more very specific industry certifications around which we would be able to build a program, so we're waiting for those standards to be adopted so that we can tailor our courses in order to have a more maritime CTE program. So we are told that the CTE Board of Trustees will be considering those during the spring, but I don't have an exact timeline.
They just started to make some changes, but they're continuing with the changes that they're making, so.
Great.
And, and just one more thing, I, on the math section, there's a course called Integrated Math, but there's not a course description, at least I couldn't find a course description for Integrated Math.
Oh, wasn't in there? I'll have to check that out, unless it somehow, I don't know, magically disappeared.
So, yes, it could be a typo, we will take a look at that. So the Integrated Math program is one, and Melissa has been deeply involved in this. So the, we have some students whose level of disability makes kind of the traditional math sequence really challenging for them to be able to complete and still meet the right requirements. So Melissa has been dogged in her work with RIDE in order to develop a program that meets the right requirements and also serves the needs of our students. The Integrated Math program will do that for us, and so we'll make sure that the proper description is in there. Thank you for catching that.
I may have inadvertently deleted or something, there's a lot of, every time you go on, for some reason, it looks different than you, than you left it.
I have a question, so, I mean, this is, the depth and breadth of this is really impressive for a school of our size.
Thank you.
You mentioned that there's, in the forward, that there's counselors to help students navigate this, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, so in, once we return to school, there's going to be a course selection window from January 3rd to January 10th, and students and parents will select courses digitally through Power School. And then the counselors will meet with all the students, and then they'll talk through that process. And then if parents want to come in, they can come in and sit through that process as well, and be a part of that with the counselor and the student. So there'll be conversations at that point, and then we'll build the schedule, and then in the late, late spring, we circle back to the students again, and the counselors meet again just to make sure that students haven't changed their mind before the end of the school year, and they make sure there's a final update before we actually go through with the scheduling, full scheduling and ending, you know, the scheduling process.
Thank you, sure.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? So not a question, but just a comment, and it's, we've, similar to what the rest of the school committee has said, the format is great. Like, I really, you know, having the Portrait of a Graduate right there, you know, everything is super organized, it's come such a long way-
Thank you.
-over the past decade, but it's great, I think it's fantastic, and we really appreciate you giving this to us at the December school committee meeting, because sometimes it, in past years, we didn't see it till January or February, and it's like, well, the, we're meeting with parents tomorrow to roll it out, you know, it's like, well, can you get it to us earlier, even if we know this is kind of a draft in that, you know, we're approving, you know, that there might be minor changes in formatting or semantics, or you may realize you forgot one little thing, but I think it's great, so.
Thank you very much.
Any other final questions, we are going to take a vote to approve tonight. All right, so we already have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you for staying so late and letting us leave you as the last item on the agenda, so thank you. So Pete, for the last one, is we are just reviewing the approved, the, the approved FY26, it's the budget schedule. So if you take a look at what we have, we already had our joint annual required town council, school committee meeting, we had that Monday night. And then a lot of these items don't involve the school committee, but we get the level of detail so we can see the work ahead with the principals preparing and submitting their budgets to Pete, they have to defend those budgets to Pete. And then the next school committee involvement, you'll see January 7th at 4:30, that's the Buildings and Ground Committee that Justin and Dave will attend, and then at our January school committee meeting, either Justin or Dave will kind of report out during school committee reports. The rest of the work is behind the scenes with school department staff, February 12th, so we, we purposely don't have our school committee meetings during February vacation because we're hoping that people are watching from home if they're not here, we don't want any time off to be a barrier to anybody. So Wednesday, February 12th, is a very important school committee meeting, that's when Dr. Cummings is going to be giving the very detailed budget presentation to us. You'll see, very strategically timed, is that capital reserve meeting that Pete and Justin will attend late February and they'll report on. And then, very important, our first budget workshop and our second budget workshop, we generally have those start a little earlier because those can be pretty lengthy meetings at time, sometimes two or three hours, the budget workshops. And we'll get agenda ahead of time that will be very specific, you know, where one budget workshop may focus on each school and special services, or one budget workshop may focus on capital improvement and facilities and transportation and, you know, so forth. Really important, those are, you know, public budget workshops. We put a placeholder for that third budget workshop if we need it. Our March school committee meeting, very important, that's when we're going to take our vote on our budget and we'll adopt that. Following that, Dr. Cummings will present, the full town council will be up here, if you can come, we'd like to have school committee be in the audience as Dr. Cummings presents to the town and the town council in March. And then, then things go on the town council side where they're going to work through the overall town budget and do their work sessions. If we, if needed, we will have a joint meeting with the town council late April, and then the town council will adopt like the whole budget. So our work is more time-intensive and heavy from like January to March. And then we kind of cycle into monthly meetings, summer workshops, strategic planning, but time-intensive with subcommittees and time-intensive with budget like January to March. So Lauren will send you calendar invites, if she hasn't already, for the meetings that we need to attend, and, you know, any questions at all about, you know, what's on this schedule, wait a minute, what's for us, what's for them? You can ask Pete, you can ask me, Justin, Diane, we're happy to say, nope, when it says, you know, budget review at central office, that's not us, that's that, but I'm happy to help you, but Lauren is very good about sending you calendar invites, but if you're ever not sure, ask anyone, because we'll keep our regular monthly meetings at seven, but those budget workshops that are open to the public and advertise, we start those earlier because sometimes they go like three hours. All right, so that is just a review, we don't take a formal vote on that, that's just more of an FYI. And for the next part, communications, it's really, you know, I'll ask the committee, is there any communications that people want to mention? And it may be, you know, if there's a Mariner Holiday Fair, or there's, you know, a school play or something, like the principals will let us know, it'll be in the written reports, but it's an opportunity if someone's like, hey, don't forget the blankety-blank, so. Sometimes we're like, nope, it's no communications because it already lives in our packet, but. Any communications people want to mention before we close? Okay, so then it is, oh, I'm sorry, yep.
So I just want to let everybody know they can get some coupons or just go into Jersey Mike's starting tonight, and it supports the high school, $3 for a sub, and it supports Narragansett High School. Donations go there.
So here's a dumb question, where did that open, where is it?
Yeah, it's near-
Oh, yeah, it's where the subway used to be, by AAA.
Where the old subway was, and by Walgreens.
Yes, by Walgreens, so I-
Are they open till 10, or they close at 9? Because I'm getting pretty hungry.
My husband went over there immediately.
I could use a $3 sub right now. All right, but that is a-
I don't think I have any cards on me tonight, but-
All right.
But you can go in there, we'll get you some cards.
Okay, see, that's a great communication to, that's a good shout-out, right, like, hey?
I bet you the high school has some.
Okay, all right, thanks, CJ. Any other communications to, any shout-outs?
That might help the bus situation for your trip to New York. There was a line on the door, I guess, tonight, my husband ran over.
Oh, that's great, cool. All right, and then our next regular full business meeting will be at 7 o'clock, Wednesday, January 22nd. If we need to have an executive session, Pete or Lauren will let you know ahead of time, sometimes we need a full hour, and sometimes it's a half hour, and sometimes not at all. Like, tonight, there wasn't anything that we needed to discuss in executive session, so we just started at 7. All right, I'm at the time here, is there a motion to adjourn, probably looks like about 8:42, is there a motion?
So, motion to accept the meeting adjourn?